... and adopt the agenda. And if we could stand and pledge to the flags, please?
I'm going to be in charge of the flag. Of the United States of America. One to the Republic, with its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and evergreen and just as well.
Alright, this is our regular school board business meeting tonight. So if anyone has any comments or items for future consideration, that would be the time to do that. Okay, then let's move on to number four in the consent agenda. For A, accept donation of a smart board from the Hunger Task Force. For B, approval of December 17, 2012, and January 14, 2013, school board meeting minutes. C, approval of teacher resignation. D, approval of new teacher hire. E, approval of open enrollment seats for 2013-14. F, approval of early graduation requests. And G, approval of December vouchers and vouchers payable. If anyone wants to pull anything from the consent agenda.
Aitlin?
Okay. I'd like to pull E for discussion.
Anything else? Alright, then is there a motion to approve B, C, D, F, and G?
Uh-huh.
CJ, is there a second? Second? Stephanie? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Alright, A.
This is a nice group here from DECA. Jackie, would you start the program?
Well, first of all, I just want to give you a little bit of history about what these guys did. And then I'm gonna let them come up and talk to you guys. And I'm also gonna let Justin from Hunger Task Force kind of explain the actual contest. For as long as I've worked at the high school, the DECA organization has participated in a food drive every year for Hunger Task Force. This year, they set out to raise thirty thousand pounds of food. At the end of it all, they raised thirty-one thousand pounds of food. The next closest school to us raised eleven thousand five hundred pounds. So it goes to tell you the hard work that these guys put into it. Mr. Jakes was brand-new at the start of the year. So he did a great job of organizing the kids. He's part of the teacher resignation that you guys are approving because he has taken a job with higher ed. And Mr. Ford is here and he's our new business teacher. So I'm gonna let Justin explain a little bit about the contest and kind of went into it. One of the things that I would like to emphasize is that these guys had absolutely no idea that there was a contest. So the thirty-one thousand pounds of food that they raised or donated was, you know, out of what their efforts were. They didn't know until everything was done and their donation was in that they had actually been participating in a contest.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, first off, we're very, very impressed. I was telling them when they came in that some of our festivals that Hunger Task Force is a part of in the summertime don't even come close to thirty-one thousand pounds of food at all at the festivals. So, so it was pretty cool. This school challenge started back last summer. I got a call from five seasons, they're out of New Orleans. And she wanted to do an American costume school day. It turned into this big idea where all these schools could compete for three months and collaborate for worlds food or build a smart board. But we obviously have been watching that stuff for about ten years now. Like, last year, I think, it closed down somehow. So they blew it out of the water and not even knowing that the smart board was a surprise. It shows how much involvement they have with the community. So we really, really appreciate it and we're looking to do again in 2013. You know, change of order, but that's why I said this challenge. Because of the challenge and how much love they had behind it. Ninety-nine school registered and we all raised a hundred and fifty thousand pounds of food in the school hall. So it's a lot to celebrate.
I'm gonna toss it over to you guys so you can each introduce yourselves. There are about fifty members in DECA. The rest are our exec board. Who left downstairs?
Hi, my name is Phil Schmitt.
I'm Lucy Weber.
I'm Kevin Johnson.
I'm David Haines. I also sit here and answer questions.
I'm Robert Clark.
I'm Jake Garment, I'm a freshman DECA member.
I'm Robin Chase, freshman.
I'm a friend, I'm Connor Junior.
We're good? We're good? Alright. Um, yeah. The food drive's been going on for about nine years now. Throughout the years, it's kind of grown. Here for us, only raising about twenty-three thousand pounds. Two years ago, we raised somewhere around twenty-nine thousand pounds. So this year, kind of what we did was try to expand it into more of the deeper edges of the district into Greenfield. Exactly like the Morgan Oaks area. Tried to expand more into Franklin with the help of Savannah, Kendall, and Christie. They were able to set up maps that would help us further our horizons on different types of. What we do is we send out with all of the members of DECA. They're put into groups of about four or five people. And what they do is one weekend, the first weekend in November, they take the bags that we get donated after we call different local businesses, local grocery stores, to have bags donated. They're donated to us. We send, package them up. We staple a letterhead onto them, say that we are dropping them off this weekend. And then next weekend, we'll be back to collect the food that has been donated. Throughout that time, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of the first weekend in November, the groups have the opportunity to drop off the bags. But on that Sunday of the following week is when we collect. And we collect from eleven to three-thirty. The Hunger Task Force had WCTC rent a semi that they brought over here with a student in their semi truck driving business class. Come over, drop the truck off. We had it over here over the weekend, loaded it up. Me and Mr. Jakes were back while everybody else was going and collecting food. Throughout that time, we strongly progressed and within the first hour, we had twenty buildup boxes filled with food already. So we just had to start laying, trying to put this food absolutely everywhere we could. Didn't really know that we were going to get our goal of thirty thousand. Our goal was thirty thousand. We definitely surpassed that. And that is how we kind of did it. Definitely, though it's not just me, Savannah, Christie, and Kendall, it is all the other forty-five members of DECA that we have. Without them, couldn't have happened. We have, we had one night, two weeks before the bag drop-off where we had thirty people in the business room stapling bags for about an hour and a half, just trying to get these bags ready for the donation day.
What does thirty-one thousand pounds get you? Does it get you the whole semi full or half?
Oh, yeah. It was filled to the brim. We had to, we had it stocked up to about, in the boxes, the box is about four, four-and-a-half feet tall. And we had it lowered, I mean, they only fit about three-quarters of the truck, but the rest of the truck was filled on the ground up to about three feet high. So it was, it was a filled semi for us, so.
It was interesting when Billy and I were back at the truck, we were kind of just talking and thinking that it would be kind of slow as people started coming back with bags from their trucks and cars. And we get completely overwhelmed as we came in. We just get covered up and then the piles just came.
Oh, yeah.
We just didn't even think it was gonna come that quick. It was pretty cool. And it's a testament to the community too and how supportive it is. It's a pretty cool thing.
Well, goal-setting, strategic planning, labor management, demographic.
Segmentation.
Yeah, mapping. So, how does that fit into DECA?
Well, DECA is a, is a business and marketing.
Leading.
Is a business and marketing type club. That's what the brand is when you go into competition phases of it. It's with, you know, branch managing, marketing, accounting, a lot of it is. Where we can go out and we practice all those skills, like you said, with this food drive such as getting on the phone and networking to local businesses. We have very, very good connections already with different local grocery stores that we can call up and there's two thousand bags donated for us. And it's all worked through the system. It's all just us putting in the work and calling those businesses, going and picking it up. I mean, we labor for, say, we work on this for about a month and a half, two months. And we start two weeks into school, getting those bags going. And also a big thanks to Kendall's parents who let us store over about ten thousand bags in their house for.
I think you guys also do more than the food drive. You do conferences, competitions?
Yes, the competition phase, we didn't have any participants this year. But the last few years, three years ago, we were able to send one kid to, or one student to the national competition. Two years ago, myself and another student qualified for the national competition, just didn't have the funds to go. But we've been able to send kids to state for four or five years now. And all the competitions are, consist of two written tests and then two business role plays where you're face-to-face with the judge. You're given a business scenario. You have to come up with a certain, a plan to effectively solve that business problem. And you're rated on your performance, your delivery, and all that kind of, all that kind of stuff. We also do the best seat in the house, which we are trying to go in this year, but just with the change in leadership, I don't know if we're gonna have enough, enough time to do it during the basketball season. But what we are also working on right now, along with the National Honor Society and Student Senate, is to fundraise for a new school store. So that's going to be our next big project that we work on.
Can I just comment for each one of you that are involved in this organization and has a business person? These are the qualities organizations look for when they hire people. And each one of you possess these qualities. And my hat goes off to each and every one of you. And make sure you put this on your resume. Because when you go looking for a job, this carries a lot of weight. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then next year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It'll be these two up here talking though, so.
You'll be at Harvard.
And that was, what I was gonna comment on is the fact that it's, as Mr. Shaw said, but it's also the fact that hopefully you've learned that what you put in, you receive in multitude of different ways. You know, and you take that philosophy forward the rest of your life. It's, you don't always have to have the recognition, you know you have the pride. When you accomplish something, as she spoke back there, that all of the DECA schools and all the schools have tried with a little effort. Look what you did. That's monumental. And that's something you should be extremely proud of yourselves for. DECA's a great program. And it just goes to what I've always said, we have some great students here with us. And you just give them the opportunity and they will shine on their own. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Did the board see the back of your shirts? So Jake, can you turn around? We don't stand.
Where's the beef?
That is classic. Who's taking over next year?
And who's, do we have students that are going to be able to attend the state competition this year?
Not this year because we weren't able to send anybody to the district competition. Just with the change in leadership, we just didn't have enough time to set up with the different competition. But I've already talked to Mr. Ford and trying to get the returning kids to the pathway to getting everything set up. Hopefully, we'll be able to send around six or seven to districts. And then with our group numbers, usually we can send at least two or three to the same competition every year.
And then if I remember the rules correctly, for every DECA club that wants to go to competition, they also have to contribute to the pool of judges. Is that correct still?
Yes, yes.
So I would take this moment then to put in a plug to have people volunteer to be DECA judges also.
Absolutely.
I've been able to do that for this group a couple of years ago. And that was fabulous experience. It was very good to see the quality of other students. You can't judge out of this group. It was fabulous. So, that'll be it for today.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So who gets the smart board?
Oh, I believe it's gonna be the business room.
I have the little joke getting in my room, so.
Great.
First week here and the smart board is mine.
Very good. And thank you students for that.
Well, thank you guys. Congratulations.
Okay, then do we have a motion to accept A?
Uh-huh.
Okay, Stephanie? Is there a second?
Second.
Rick, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then E, Eileen?
Do we want to have discussion regarding this open enrollment? There seemed to be quite a, there was especially lingering with the how many we would take in the fifth grade, possible considerations of another section.
I could address that if you want, Eileen. Is that, Nancy, you wanna do that?
Sure.
Okay. Alright. When you look at Joel's seat that he did.
Hey, David? Do you want to get a picture of that for the patch? That's the DECA kids that.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay. Our goal is always to try to average seven sections at every grade level at the elementary. And that would average about twenty-three kids per classroom. And then six at the middle school. And because the class size is bigger than middle school, it's a natural roll-up. So, right now, we're near the capacity of fifth grade. I checked, I pulled a sheet from the last couple of years, how much we go up from fifth to sixth grade. And when Tom used to do his projections, he always added six kids because we'll get kids from outside the district, well, not outside the district, from parochial schools coming in sometimes at the sixth grade level instead of waiting for high school. So, the odds are strong for you in place that we will have more than the one-hundred-and-forty-six that are currently in sixth, in fifth grade projected for next year. So, the recommendation is just to leave the placeholder in place. I wouldn't add the full sixteen right now. I would just put like two in that slot. Because then what happens is that's the minimum number of seats we would take. And we wait until June or July. That's when we have a meeting with our elementary staff, our principals again, and say, okay, do we want to run with six or should we roll it up? And then we'll have a waiting list that we could roll it up if that was in the best interest of our classes.
So what you're saying is at the fifth grade level, right now, added seats recommendation is zero on Joel's seat?
Joel put down zero. We talked about it. We did most of it by phone and by email because he came back into the office from the convention stuff.
So you're thinking you're gonna roll it up?
As I talk with the elementary principals, I'm thinking we just put two in rather than the full sixteen that they had talked about making another section. So if we put two in, that'll hold, that'll get people to go onto our waiting list. And then we can make the final decision in June or July. And we know more what we have. Where do you see the number sixteen? See what, Rick? I'm sorry.
Who's sixteen?
On the sheet he originally sent to me, oh, on the bottom. For six sections at twenty-three each, we need to attract at least sixteen. What he means is seven sections. If you wanted to go to seven sections, you need to attract at least sixteen to make it economically viable. Because you take sixteen times sixty-five hundred. What we approve is the add seat column. Are the numbers in the add seat column wrong? No, except for that zero. Because that N seat, add seat column, they said there is an option. You either keep the zero or you put sixteen in there. My suggestion is don't do either one. Just do a real low number. And it'll still attract applicants. So we'll have a pool and we don't have to make the decision until we know more. Because you don't want to have to add a section if you can help it. What have we added in the past years in open enrollment in six and nine? It would depend on the numbers. Because what we're trying to do is average one-hundred-and-sixty-eight at middle school. And we're trying to stabilize it. Because if you can do that, you get consistent academic programming. Instead of one year you have it, one year you don't. And you have budget predictability. The last couple of years, what grade level did you ask? Sixth? Well, is thirty an add number you want to add? Or is thirty including some of the open enrollments that are coming out of fifth grade already? Thirty is the add number. Because you have one-hundred-and-six, oh, I'm looking, you have one-hundred-and-twenty-two fifth graders going into sixth grade next year. Right now, the current sixth grade is being served by six teachers and they're serving one-hundred-and-eighty-two kids. One-hundred-and-sixty-seven is the target. Or one-hundred-and-sixty-eight. One-hundred-and-twenty-two is just the roll-up from fifth?
From this, from fifth.
And then what's your survey tell you about St. Mary's, St. Jacobus, whatever else coming over here? Well, that is, it varied from six to nine over the last three years. I just looked at the last three years. No more than nine? Nine is the top number. Okay, so let's say we're looking at one-hundred-and-thirty. Does thirty add another section? Is that an FTE? No, because see the, right now, see the number of sections are six. In other words, six core teachers. And right now, this year, they're serving one-hundred-and-eighty-two kids. If we added thirty kids and brought that up to one-hundred-and-fifty-two or even to one-hundred-and-sixty, they think they're on vacation because they have twenty-seven less kids. Well, but maybe we only need five. So in other words, are we keeping a sixth teacher forgetting half the revenue? No. We're keeping a sixth teacher. We have one-hundred-and-thirty kids. How many teachers would we need? Where'd you get by with five? Let me do a quick thing here.
We had one-hundred-and-twenty-two.
But, Rick, the goal is if you have enough open enrollments to pay for the teacher, and sixteen will. You should fill a section. But if we, but if we would only have five sections for you, it wouldn't make sense to keep it so. Okay, the average teacher salary with benefits is about seventy-five thousand, okay? So you could subtract seventy-five thousand from our budget. Or if you keep the same class size, take the thirty, multiply it times sixty-five hundred, you have a substantial economic advantage. But it's not just the economic advantage. The big advantage is academic predictability. You have the same, you want consistency at your grade levels. You don't want one year having five where they have to double up and do an A-B kind of schedule one year and the next year they go back up to six. Because then the following year, notice it's a bigger class. So you'd be bringing that sixth section back in again.
And that, and as it goes down, it looks like the classes remain bigger.
Right. So for some reason, this year's fifth grade was a low number. So that's why, and over the past three years that I've been here, the board has always wanted to target sixth grade, ninth grade, and early grades, K-1. So this just happens to be a year where it fits perfectly.
At ninth grade, do you know what we typically pull in then from parochial schools?
Um.
Sure. We lose a lot of kids from parochial schools. I would say it's really more than maybe zero. Probably. Maybe zero. It's not like you gain, right? I used to think the same thing. You used to gain the kids coming from, let's just say, Mary's coming to Wayne.
Right, but then we may lose one if we're kind of higher.
Usually, just looking at the old actuals, like oh-nine, ten, to ten-eleven, to eleven-twelve. And it would vary, like eighties, from one-eighty-three to two-oh-eight, one-sixty-two to one-ninety-three. So anywhere from twenty-five, thirty kids you'd pull in from parochial schools usually. And how many lose? I'm sorry, what? You probably don't know, but when we were talking about it, somebody did lose. Oh, how many? Four, five, or six. That's, that numbers really low. Because if they've, then usually the parochial, we have a ton of parochial K-8 schools. We have a limited number of parochial high schools in our district. Matter of fact, the only one I think we have is from Marquette, right? Well, but they don't all go to our district. I remember one year, ten kids went to Marquette. Oh, or Pius or something like that. Yeah. And that happens, but.
Well, I was just thinking if you, at ninth grade, if we have one-sixty-five and then you add thirty, but say then you have another twenty-five or thirty come in from parochial schools and you don't lose a lot, are we gonna be pushing above our target of two-ten?
The question, I think the question I would piggyback right on today, this one-sixty-five is just a roll-up from eighth grade to ninth grade for next year.
Correct. So you make that number, if you're more comfortable with twenty, that's fine. Because we can, when it gets, again, when it gets to June or July, we look at, what the board is doing at this meeting here, yes, we have to approve the seats as that's a technicality that we're opening right now. But it's the, so we don't have this at every board meeting. You say, yep, we agree, we want an average class size of two-ten at the high school. We want an average class size of one-sixty-eight at the middle school. And an average class size of whatever twenty-three is times six. I'm sorry, it's times seven. And then, when it gets, so you find those classes where they're really low, you identify those seats. And then when it gets to June, we look at what we have coming in. Because by then, we'll have enrollments from the parochial schools. And they'll have come to our, our ninth grade planning sessions, they'll sign up for classes, things like, so we kind of have an idea by June. And then we look at the numbers we, instead of predicting, we actually have the actual hard numbers. And then we just fill it in from there.
We can always add seats. We cannot take away from this number.
Correct. So if, if you're more comfortable, I'm totally fine with that. Because you put down twenty, we're gonna have forty, fifty people by, and they'll be on the waiting list.
We always have a waiting list.
Yeah. This year, we use that same philosophy. And only one grade level did we run out of waiting list seats. You know, so it can happen if you have, don't have a placeholder in there. But, and in that one, we did, we waited till August before we even tried it.
My recommend, my recommendation to administration would be to somehow tie this sheet into our FTE sheet that we're gonna get in April, May, or April. Give us, because it would kind of all tie together. This is the basis for the beginning of that sheet that you're gonna create.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But if we can get, I'm not saying that I'm recommending that you guys do all that work ahead of time, but get us, so, for those board members that have been on this for a while, they, we understand it. But for future board members, if you could tie this whole thing with that bigger picture of how this all flows going forward, it would probably be beneficial for explanation purposes as to how we're getting to where we are. The other recommendation is that, it was in your email that you sent to us, the dollars that we're talking about. Because that's really what open enrollment is. Open enrollment is a balance. Because that's really what open enrollment is. Open enrollment is, is a balance between how much revenue we're bringing in, how much expenses that Rick is saying that we tie out in going from six, seven sections down to six sections, you know, by doing that. But these are just recommendations for going forward, um, because you're gonna have a whole slew of new board members here within a year or two. Then if you could tie it all and make it all kind of flow a little easier.
You know what? That's, you just made me think of something. Probably this should be one of those policy things we try to put in place. You never want to say a hard number for teachers, you know, because that can change. If, if we don't get people applying for open enrollment and our, our numbers decrease, we might have to make larger class sizes. But that's a bit, that's a lot of ifs down the road, but if we could just have, right now, it's a, it's a range. So it's already pretty much in the policies, the ranges that you consider for, for section, for class, for grade, rather.
The max, been super max.
Yeah.
But I mean, everything's gonna change, as you put out an email today. If, if the Wisconsin state government gets some of their desires, I mean, we're truly gonna become a competitive, we have to become a competitive school district to drive kids to be part of this district, because they'll have the opportunity to get their wish. They'll have the opportunity to go anywhere they want. Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be tied to where you physically live anymore.
Right, and the people that do the best job of promoting our district is that string of people that were in front of us a little while, although it's not us or board or administrators, it's, I mean, that sells the district. And parents want their kids to be here, to be part of that kind of stuff, as long as we can keep that. You're right on the business end of it, that's a positive, but on the academic end, which is, I was trying to get at that a little bit, Rick. It's, um, like high school trying to plan, you know, do you offer, um, we used to have two business teachers, we're down to, to one. You know, like, I mean, you could probably do a better job of saying what we used to have than I can, because you had kids in school here. But if you have a stable enrollment, you can say, we'll always have this offering for business classes, unless something new comes around, then you drop something off and you add what's the new thing. If you don't have stable enrollment, you can't have stable staffing, which means you, your, um, the choices for the kids is gonna change by year.
What's the per capita membership number we got open?
This, the year I, the one I put in the, um, email to you guys was eleven-twelve, and that was sixty-eight. Because of Act Ten, when we reduced everything, it went down to sixty-five.
Sixty-four, fifty.
Fifty-four, fifty. If they do the two-hundred-dollar, and I'll get into that in my other report, if they do the two-hundred-dollar, um, per pupil adjustment that Senator Olson is suggesting, um, it'll go up to, back up in the sixty-eight-hundred-dollar range. If they do a hundred, it'll go up a little bit. If they do zero, it'll stay around the sixty-five thousand range. So it depends on what they do, because basically, open enrollment is a little over two-thirds of the full student class.
So the recommendation at the ninth grade level, keep it at the thirty, or?
No, put it at twenty. I, I, your rat, your reasoning is sound, so put it at twenty, because we can always increase it when it gets to that, that month.
I know we had a significant waiting list, because that, last year, coming in ninth grade, because that's my son's grade, and I know there were students who wanted to come here who could not get in. I mean, you know, they, they, they just were.
So what I'm asking you to approve is this, the sheet from Joel, with the changes of, um, the ninth grade seats are twenty, and the zero goes not to sixteen, or it, it just stays at two. Put, take the zero, I'll put in two.
Where? At five?
At fifth grade, elementary five.
I don't know if I can put the motion forward, but I'm gonna go very specific if I put it forward.
All right, would like to make a motion.
And you're leaving this, in the thirty at the sixth grade?
Yes. Because that's way low.
Yeah, it really is. So I wonder what happened.
Because otherwise, that almost could be just five sections.
Yeah.
Fifty-five.
But that's a good time. Do you think we'd have thirty? I mean, do-
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Freshman year is when people walk.
Can I, can I ask you this question? How many open enrollment people are certainly taking seats at the fifth grade level that will move up to sixth grade?
Good question. That's the one I sent you this afternoon. There's a total of eight open enrollment kids at fifth grade.
So out of, um, a desire to one-hundred-and-sixty-eight, thirty-eight would be open enrollment.
I'm gonna take your word for the math, Rick, because.
Well, you know, one-hundred-and-twenty-two plus six plus thirty.
I said eight.
It's actually a great amount.
Hundred-and-fifty-eight.
Hundred-and-fifty-eight, right.
That's even worse for a show. Thirty-eight of one-hundred-and-fifty-eight, a third of the.
Yeah. But we did, uh, we very, had a very specific analysis of academic achievement of the open enrollment kids. And a majority of the board here was sitting when we did it. And the only grade level where they didn't outperform the resident students was the third grade at Hills Corners, and that was just because they, um, they were actually our kids and we, we kept them on a waiver. So they weren't really true open enrollment kids. We just gave them the open enrollment, the cost of the tuition waiver. So it's, it, it actually increases reporting, it has for our district, increased the recording at the state level. And that's because of the parental involvement. It's, that's what our district's all about.
I thought that thirty at sixth grade looked initially really high, but then when you sent the subsequent report, and I saw that we took twenty-eight this year for seventh grade, it wasn't as far off as what in my mind I would have thought would have been available.
And in the legislative report, I'll talk to you about the impact, I mean, I shared it with, in Madison, of the underleaving. We wouldn't have that option if we don't have any of them.
Well, what, the reason I draw up the discussion is, so like your annual budgets, much unfunded?
Uh, twenty-four million.
And how many total membership?
Um, twenty, just under twenty-four-hundred. No, yeah, just under twenty-four-hundred.
So that's, what is that a piece?
On the third, our second Friday was twenty-one forty-nine.
So everybody else who lives in the district has to pick up slack to carry the open enrollment, so historically, we've always tried to fund, if you have thirty seats and twenty are being used, it makes sense to throw in another ten. But if you have five classrooms, to open up another classroom, it's not just the fact of the seventy-five-thousand-dollar FTE, because first of all, you need a minimum divided by point eight to determine what the non-payroll cost would be. And then you have to add other fixed costs, but there's some level of whether those classrooms can be reassigned or reutilized or repurposed or anything else, computers, smart boards, whatever. If, if the costs are more than, you know, but, so I, then you multiply six thousand times twenty-six kids, that's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-six-hundred or something like that. So, I mean, it's not, it's not easy math. It's soft math, and I guess I just, you know, just push the envelope a little bit when I question it. Because your third-year grade is not Whittenell School District, and that means Whittenell citizens are subsidizing the open enrollment.
And I, there's two ways of looking at that.
Right, right. I, I tried to present both ways. Obviously, I swayed on a, one singular way, but.
Yeah, because the, the dollar amount, even if you take the sixty-five-hundred at the low end, um, we don't have class sizes of twenty at that level.
Twenty-six, I think, is what's gonna come through.
So let's, so twenty-six kids times sixty-five-hundred bucks is a hundred-and-seventy, sixty-nine thousand dollars. The average teacher package here is about seventy-five thousand dollars. There aren't, there are.
But it's more than just a teacher that's.
I am, right, that, that I understood, but I, I wouldn't think that it's.
There's consumables, there's whatever.
Yeah.
We, we do have those, um, that's why I looked at it on a total budget, you can look at what it costs to educate a kid every year.
Yeah.
And when they publish our DPI, they publish that.
Right, that's our per pupil amount, which is.
Well, it was six plus.
So our, our, this year, per pupil cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-five hundred, somewhere between a thousand dollars.
We have two years in a row where, where sixth grade will be low, right? We have this incoming one, and then the next one, then we jump up again. So there is the consistent, you know, you, we keep the six sections at, make that sixth grade five, so you have the same staff. I guess there's that consistency, knowing that in the, you know, in the third year, you're bumping back up again to meeting that. So that could be that, that one.
I wasn't sure what to expect this year, because last year, you guys didn't even pull it off the consent agenda. You left it out there.
Well, well, I think, I believe last year, we also had a, this is, we had a, uh.
Yeah, the finance committee.
Right, we had, we had a lot of discussion. But. Okay.
So is there any other questions on this, on this? Someone like to make that a motion?
I'll put the motion forward. The motion to approve the following open enrollment seats per grade.
Additional seats.
Additional seats per grade. K-four, one. K-five, ten. First grade, ten. Second grade, one. Third grade, three. Fourth grade, one. Fifth grade, two. Sixth grade, thirty. Seventh grade, zero. Eighth grade, two. Ninth grade, twenty. Zero for tenth, zero for eleventh, and zero for twelfth.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, fine. Okay, any further discussion on that? All right, Kathy, did you get all those numbers?
I did.
Okay.
What, what was it? Just the, the total?
Is that just total? Katie. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries. So we'll move on to number five, old business, report on the W A S B convention. I know we had several people that attended, so. Eileen, would you like to start?
Yes, it was information overload. Um, I, I was able to attend all three days. Um, I kind of focused a little bit on the human resources side since I was on the personnel committee. Um, and I chose to, um, attend a workshop about, uh, three-sixty leadership performance. I also attended the Cedarburg, which, the superintendent of the Cedarburgs, um, school district who had come and given us a presentation here about effective education evaluation, I kind of did it again because, um, I just needed to hear it twice. And then I also went to the Ripon College Model. Um, and then I also threw in, um, a STEM, uh, STEM gap program, because I think that that's an area that, again, we could do more with, as within our district. Um, and then I also, uh, chose to attend one about becoming a more powerful board by creating a strong link between strategic planning, board goal setting, and board of education. And that one was, I, I chose that one because it was the walking superintendent who was chosen as superintendent of the year. So I wanted to see what they do that's so great and see how we compare. Um, and I, I felt that, you know, we're, I think we're good. I think we're good. I mean, they have, they have their mission statement and they, they, you know, they write their goals to, um, coordinate with their, their mission statement. And, um, I saw a lot of similarities to what we're trying to do as a board. And I thought, so I was, I was glad we attended. One thing that they, they did do in practice that they do at their board meetings that I felt would be kind of neat is they have a section at the beginning, which is a spotlight on teaching or learning. So I know we do that from time to time, usually, it seems like it usually comes in the main meeting. But maybe we could add, you know, once a year, somebody from Edgerton, or somebody from Hills Corners, somebody from the high school, middle school, each take one of the meetings, and either have a teacher or student come in and demonstrate something, um, that is being done in the classroom that kind of centers around their goals. You know, I was thinking we added some new initiative, curriculum, like, you know, the spelling or the reading curriculum. And actually, or even the iPad initiatives, just come in and just do a little demonstration of what's being done in the classroom, um, on a regular basis. Just to kind of, I guess, keep us really more focused on what's happening at the student level. And, um, and it was the kind of, the first keynote speaker, Quinn and I were there together about, um, really how, how, the way teaching is being changed a little bit to, you know, make students happy. To have the skills that will make them, you know, really employable, I guess, in the, in the, uh, global economy. Um, you know, things like, for example, like we just saw with the, the Deca group, you know, having real-world experience. And, yeah, and again, that, in that session too, they talked again about, you know, more students maybe doing a two-year tech program as opposed to necessarily always doing, you know, being focused on a four-year degree. So those are some of the things that I picked up from there. Yeah, I was, it was a lot. Oh, and I also was, obviously, um, a representative, um, representative to, what was it? The delegate, well, yeah, delegate session. And of the resolutions that came up, all passed with the exception of two. Um, what failed was the initiative, um, for student academic and career planning, kind of at, at the middle, starting at the middle school level. And really, the reason that did not go through, not that people didn't think that that was a, a good concept, again, they just didn't want another unfunded mandate. Um, it's something that I know we do at our district, and I'm glad we, we do that, but I could understand why, um, you know, districts were concerned about that going through with everything else that, you know, needs to be part of the financial pie. Um, let's see, what else did we go? Oh, and then there was the other resolution dealt with the, um, shortage of speech and language pathologists. And the reason that failed was there was concern with, um, not having the, you know, the master's degree, not having enough hands-on experience with the, with the pathologists who are actually trained and have a master's degree. That that might, there might not be enough regulation, that might be a disservice, um, and not being able to provide the services they deliver to. So even though there was a shortage, um, there was that concern with the quality of the services that would be provided if that was true. So we'll see what, you know, what hap, happens as they take these resolutions.
I was able to attend, uh, two days, Wednesday and Thursday. And, uh, like Eileen said, we, uh, both, uh, went to the one speaker, uh, gentleman. And he, it was funny, because they had just given the awards to the teachers of the year. And he starts off his, uh, presentation saying, uh, K through twelve or K through sixteen is moving towards virtual, school owners won't need teachers. So it was a bit unusual. That was his take on it. He really wanted us to think outside the box. Uh, I went to several workshops, a couple on the budget, how to build a budget and how, how to work with a budget. Um, I went to one workshop regarding a policy, policy committee. And then went one for, uh, safety of our schools. And I think that, I didn't take notes on any of them, I just kind of absorbed it, and, um, the thing that really popped out with that was they had a graph from nineteen ninety- And, um, the thing that really popped out with that was they had a graph from nineteen ninety to two thousand and ten with all the killings and shootings in schools. And from nineteen ninety to Columbine, which was, um, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, I believe. It topped off there, and then two years after that, it started to decline. Obviously, people are more aware, people put the policy in, people are watching the policy. But then it started to climb back up. And it, 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 and it didn't have, uh, two thousand one or two thousand two. But what we talked about there was you have to keep, you have that policy in place, first of all, and you have to keep, keep awareness of it because once, once after the initial tragedy happens, it wears off. And if you're not stubborn about keeping aware, awareness of it, it's, it's gonna, they have them again. I went and saw, uh, Will Allen of Growing Power. Uh, it is amazing what one man started and it is what it is today. And, and I don't know if we have, uh, open field or somewhere to, to put up one of these, uh, uh, incubators where they, where they grow food and it, it might be a real good opportunity for our high school students. Uh, they have them all over MPS, uh, gives them land on their properties and they, and the actual food that is produced from there goes right to, uh, one of the suppliers and it goes right into the schools. And it, uh, it's just amazing to, to watch and, uh, all that's going on with that. And I think the taxpayers of this district should be very happy with Ms. Kathy Kloss. She got every highlighter, pen, pencil, yeah, that could possibly be humanly taken from a table. And I had the pleasure to watch it all and, uh, I, I think we, I think our budget's gonna go down a little bit this year because of Ms. Kloss. She is not shy when it comes to freebies. So, uh, it was nice to, it was nice to, it's actually amazing to, um, you know, you're, you're sitting there and Dr. Thornton from the, the superintendent of MPS gets up and talks and Mr. Ev- Evers gets in talks and, uh, that's all, and we all have something to say and it's, it was all very, uh, it's a good learning situation. So, thank you for sending that.
And then Lowell, you went, Doug went, and Madam, eh?
Like I said in the email to you guys, it's one of the most powerful educational conferences in the U.S. Because they, they combine it and they look at it from all three levels. Um, when they, when Quinn was talking about the school safety, they don't just have one session on Wednesday or Thursday. I went to the one on Friday and it brought in another piece of the puzzle, you know. And then you go to the legislative session and one of the potential funding, where I know it's outside the level limit, is, was kind of like, I'll be able to, I'm catching people. But it is, um, for security upgrades, you know, so when you want to do the double doors type of thing. And it, it's just such a well-rounded experience. And I kind of set the bar for Kathy because when I went to the concourse last year, every single session, they had pens out. So I came in with like twenty pens and I haven't had to order pens for the last two years, so.
I just want, I just want to, really quick, I did go to, who, who was our, who did our field, VJS? They, our picture, uh, you know, to oversee their view of the, the football field over there. I gotta tape measure, I, I'm not really good about collecting stuff.
Give her a walkie talkie.
Take her to the next one, Kathy, show her a little bit.
You'll have to teach me.
Doug, anything else, stuff out for your, your session?
Well, I spent, I wasn't there on Friday, I was back here, but on Wednesday and Thursday, I spent a lot of time visiting with, um, some of the insurance consultants that I'm going to be getting an RFP out to for our consulting services. So that we can be ready when the various phases of, whatever you want to call it, Obamacare or PPO or whatever kick in over the next few years. There's an awful lot that has to be done and, um, the way they're going about it, um, is a threat of, um, surcharges and excise taxes and things like that. Um, we've got to position ourselves so we don't get caught in that. And actually, there was even a, um, one of the, um, speaker sessions dealt with that subject and I went to that as well.
All right, there's nothing else on the convention. We'll move on to number six, new business. Lowell, you want to start with the, uh, A, Hills Corners Elementary Safety Review?
Yeah, and I, I did do a brief outline just to keep myself to the point. Um, but I had a meeting with Chief Sarah from Hills Corners and Lori Comas on January seventeenth. Um, originally the chief had called Nancy regarding some traffic issues and she referred him to me and I sent him an email and we set up the, the appointment. So we met over, um, at Lori's building, N E C. And we went out and discussed current traffic patterns and congested areas, particularly along Angel Avenue, and discussed possible solutions. You know, the, the current possible solutions as the, as compared to the optimal. So, you know, you talk about everything from police presence, including just sitting right on the median strip there, to, um, what we finally settled on for the immediate, was putting cones outside that parking lane. So when people see cones, they just naturally pay attention more, slow down a little bit more. Um, he's gonna look for some, um, he's gonna talk to Greenfield about some of the, uh, solar lights, uh, signs. And then possibly a speed control sign, you know, like when they put the one out here that said, "Out fast, you're going," and they can only, you know, and all that stuff. Um, and then we discussed the proposed building redesign along with controlled access compared to what we currently have. You know, where you have to use the camera, um, control, the optimal controlled access is when you, you still get buzzed in with the camera, but then you have to come through the secretary's office before you can access. And what, one of the things that you learn is that's, if there ever is a real intruder, that's nasty. It gives the teachers and students time to scroll away or, um, because it, you're slowing people up. It makes the goal is to slow people up every step of the way. Um, let's see, oh, we discussed the involvement, his involvement in the development of the updated safety plan. Um, like I told you, that was first approved back in May of ninety-five by the board with periodic revisions. Back then, you did them every five years, now we're supposed to be done every three years. And it was slated for August, but we'll present it in March, that's the, the law. And I shared the LEAP program with them, which is, um, a program to increase police presence in schools using district office people like himself, who self oftentimes would get out of the office, go eat lunch at the elementary school, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, but it's a, actually a much more complex program than that, but that was that. And we do get a lot of, um, like a daytime officer spends a lot of time walking through the safety plan with Lori and, and she runs a lot through it. So that's the elementary safety review.
Good.
The second part, I think I was supposed to do a legislative update.
Legislative update, right.
Um, and, well, it was a busy week, because that was January seventeenth. On Friday, January eighteenth, a team of eight board members and superintendents representing the Southeast Wisconsin School Alliance that were members of for many decades, traveled to Madison, a visit with, uh, Rich Zipper, who is Governor Walker's chief of staff, and Sarah Archibald, who's the policy advisor to Senator Luther Olson. He's in charge of education, he's the chair of the education committee. Um, started with Sarah, talked about the need for flexibility, um, start end times, minutes, hybrid models where you, you know, kids could do, um, some of their stuff online and then part of the week, you know, where you flip the fashion panel, part of the week do face-to-face. Um, start or beginning and end, school year times, although you'll never get that from a guy who represents Wisconsin Dells changing that September line. This is not gonna happen. Um, then we talked about, oh, one of the reasons I went along was Doug and I had been talking. One of the goals of the current administration, Governor Walker's administration, is to keep property taxes down. Um, so that was my opportunity to share our Whitman story, which is, our board supports that philosophy. They wanted a zero increase out of recognition of fiscal challenges for all our taxpayers. And we under-levered approximately eight hundred and seventy-five thousand to keep the zero increase. The catch twenty-two is, the state with the current formula, um, says, "Well, if you didn't spend that eight seventy-five, you obviously don't need it." So that reduces the, um, the state aid by that amount, which then, when you reduce state aid, they keep the same, uh, revenue limit. You reduce the state aid, you're increasing the, if you go to that, you're increasing the local taxpayer amount. So it, it's a, for, that being a target, it's a goofy thing to have in there. And then, um, when we went to Governor Walker's office and met with Rich and Michael Brinkman also. Michael is the education advisor and he was very interested. I mean, we shared the typical, most districts are in the position of having to cut hundreds, if not several million dollars this coming school year, and the last one. We didn't have to because of the, the paralegal of the finance committee, the board, the conservative nature of the board, looking out for the future. Our fund balance, all that stuff is, has helped us be in a strong position right, right today. Um, but, um, Michael was very interested in that because I said, "If you want us to keep doing that, you better give us some options." So, um, I think we'll get that one. And he suggested we also talk about it at the joint finance committee. And I testified before for them, it's, it's simple. Um, is, um, you get on, get there early enough to get on the doctor's, like, always you could be there for twelve hours waiting for a two-minute presentation. Um, so that's the legislative update. And then the last one I was gonna update you on is the Second Chance Partners for Education. And again, this was something that, um, I knew about from being a, when I was a superintendent in Philmyra. The original place was set up with Generac. And so I had students from Philmyra Eagle going to Generac, um, that were juniors and seniors. And for their last two years, they would, basically what they did is, they went to school, they took their classes, the current, current classes in the morning, and then worked on the floor for six to eight hours of the day. And then they were paid a, a wage, um, slightly above, um, minimum wage and it goes, as they, the longer they're there, just like any typical job. Um, and I had forgotten actually all about it, Nancy, again, and where she works, they use it there and, um, we, I forgot what Wayne's last name is, it's probably on here. Everett?
Everett.
Everett suggested that we, um, uh, talk about it again and see if the Whitman students are interested. So, um, uh, he dropped off a number of, uh, Second Chance Partners for Education. We met together as administrative team, liked the idea. They're basically, if they take one of our students, our students are still, you know, have a Whitman diploma. They could actually come back and participate in extracurricular events if they want to, you know, so they were seven to three education and work. They could come back here and participate in basketball, parlor things, football, whatever they're having, so on. Um, and they end up with advanced standing with, uh, within the technical college system. That was, uh, transcriptive credits, or usually end up with a year and a half of transcriptive credits. And they earn their two-year youth apprenticeship certi- certificate. And over half of the kids end up staying permanently where they're doing their apprenticeship program. So it's a, it's a good program. It's a, you know, when you look at the bell curve, that it's the kids on the end of the bell curve that, for whatever reason, just nothing here was relevant enough to make them want to be rigorous about it. And this is increasing relevance a little bit and enabling those kids so that we end up with a well-trained, well-trained school. Do you want to add anything, you want to say?
Yeah, we started this program where I work, um, in September. And so we have two students that work for us, they go to school in the afternoon from one, one to three, and they work for us from seven until, um, one o'clock. And, um, they are, they're wonderful kids, they're smart kids, and they just were not successful in a regular high school environment. And, um, one of the kids, um, I, you know, I keep telling him, I said, "We could hire you right now." I mean, he's sixteen years old, he does a great job, he can do, he can weld, he can, he catches on to everything really quickly. You know, and I often wondered why he, um, didn't like high school or because, a lot of these kids are, they, you know, they're not getting good grades and things like that. And it's a really smart kid. And he just said that he, he, he likes to see more of an immediate impact, you know, when he'd do a paper in school or something and then you have to wait for soloing to get some feedback on it and he just likes more immediate feedback. And he, uh, you know, has plans to go into the service when he is done with his, with his schooling. And, um, you know, it's a really good program, it's, it's a really good program for kids that are interested in more of a manufacturing environment or maybe they don't have exposure, but they're more of a catapult and, and, um, they work at three different companies during the twenty-one months that they're in this program. And, um, you know, a lot of times, the, all three companies are wanting to hire them right after, when they graduate. And, um, it's a good experience for them, they earn money along the way and, um, yeah, we pay them minimum wage. And we pay them for their class time and their work time. And, um, so it's a, it's a really good program. So I'm really excited if we're gonna have some Whitman students participating in that.
Then how they do it is we, um, identify some of the students, so, um, Jackie went with the counselors. And then they screen and select the students. Because it is rigorous, I mean, a kid puts in a full eight hours and that's when they first start, you know, that is a bit of a, back to that.
It is, you know, they're, they're thrust into an adult environment and they don't have their, and like, we have two students, so that at least they have each other as a little bit of a support there. But, you know, they're assigned mentors for their jobs at work and, um, our, the mentors that we have are fantastic with these kids. And, um, but they, but it is a little bit of a, you know, difficult transition for them to go into a work environment and, and have to work for six hours a day and, you know, they go to school for, you know, for two hours and, and, uh, but they're, they're both being very successful.
Jackie, how many do you think would be in the pool that may want this, that you, you know?
I think it would be a small pool, but you have to be very careful if you're saying, "Are successful." They come back and then for whatever period of time that they were gone, um, you're making up those credits. So you'd want to be very careful in selecting kids who have very good work ethic and have demonstrated that that's something that they're very good at so that when they went out into the workforce, that they would do well with that aspect and they need to capitalize on those school parameters. So we'd be very selective.
And a big portion of it is, um, parental involvement as well. And so they, they have to meet with the kids and the parents and the parents have to be on board with it because if the student starts work at seven o'clock in the morning, you know, they're gonna need a way to get there. And so if the parent can't drop them off, or, we had, uh, one of our two students, um, we really kind of struggled with in the beginning. You know, he left late a lot of the times for work and, and just kind of struggled with, um, you know, staying on task and things like that. And so we met with him, we met with the teacher, the teacher worked with him. And so they're really good at working with the kids to get them to the level that they need to be. They concentrate on, on things like that in the classroom if they have to and, and work extra with them. And, um, he's really turned things around and he's, um, he's doing great.
Basically, this is just an example of, you know, at the conference, they talk about individualized learning for kids because it has to be relevant and rigorous wherever they happen to be in the spectrum. And we have the UW Whitewater classes now where they can get college credit, automatic UW credit. Um, we have this for current tech ed. So we're trying to enrich from the both ends to the middle, you know. And, um, we're starting a new, um, committee, an innovation committee, uh, like one guy from Corona stood up and talked about it, that after one session, we'd be, we gotta let them ask questions at the end. Um, uh, we're doing, I didn't like standing up and talking, but we have the same thing going. So it's a, um, it's a way of making sure that you have, um, options for the kids that are going to help them be successful in that whole area. That's my report.
All right, any questions for Lowell? All right, then number six, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration, or anything?
I'll just come with one.
Okay.
You know, Eric, you're probably, I was wondering if you would like to give us a report on your visit to the Milton Middle School and their 101 mobile. I know you invited us on the field trip and I don't think any of us were able to make it.
You know, one other thing, Lowell, you and I exchanged some emails for the policy committee on crisis management plan. We have a section 723 of our policy that's talking about emergency plans. And we just want to review that and maybe, I'm not sure, this hasn't been updated for a while. And makes it, make sure it's germane, you know, it was '08, to encompass the things that have occurred lately throughout the year.
Well, in addition to the policy, my understanding, at one time, we developed an emergency manual for each building that we worked on with the police departments.
Yeah, and every year that gets updated.
Yeah.
And it's, there's a district one.
Maybe if reference is not made to that, you should also make reference to those manuals.
Good idea.
Anything else? All right, number seven, board member announcements?
I have sticky notes too. The first thing I wanted to, I wanted to do a shout out to the students who participated in the talent show Saturday night. I was able to attend. I also wanted to thank the Band Booster parents and the students and families that came out to watch the performances because that's half the fun is to be able to share your talents with others. And we do have some very talented students in our community and it was nice that they had the opportunity to share. And then I also just wanted to make reference, being the Hills Corners Elementary liaison, that they have a knowledgeathon going on this Friday in which students are collecting pledges to raise money to replace some, I guess, of the older equipment on the southeast side playground. So I'm hoping to get over there on Friday. I believe it's Chris Romine who is, is kind of spearheading that, that project. So it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how that goes. And then the last announcement I will make has to do with, and I don't even know if we want to bring this up after all this food that we were able to do for DECA, but there's also now a peanut butter drive that is being done through the communities. And the Hills Corners Fire Department is a collection site. Hunger Task Force is trying to collect 100,000 jars of peanut butter. And I guess because the price of the peanuts and peanut butter has gone up, they're in shorter supply this year than they have been. And I did actually pass that information over to the two elementary school PTOs. But it's just, you know, for the community to be aware that that is going on, that and other, you know, fire stations throughout the town.
The Greenfield Fire Department's are also providing their stations.
And I'd like to say kudos to Jackie Winters and her staff and students for, we had the eighth grade open house. I'm going to be a high schooler next year. And all the, all the honor roll, honor students. They gave the tour, all the other athletes and kids that are involved in the activities are all there down in the cafeteria after. And the teachers, very enthusiastic, it was well-run. That horn went off when we were going to the next room, so, and we were all down in the cafeteria at 7:42, was it?
Yep.
There you go. Very well, thank you.
And I think that really helps, I have a ninth grader this year and I felt that that was something that helped the transition folks moving.
Very nice.
I will add that I was not at the Talent Show because I was at another function. I was at the Whitman Youth Basketball Winehouse. Laughed about it because I was with her.
My husband represented me there, I went to the Talent.
They, I just wanted to say kudos to them, they did a great job, it was very well-attended. And I know some people don't like public recognition, but a lot of the stuff, they had an amazing silent auction. They had hundreds, hundreds of items in the silent auction. And for the unsung, they just, some of us give and some of us don't. Quinn, you gave out and yours was bid on quite extensively. And so, you know, as another board member who donates, it's nice to see that people don't really recognize the fact that we give in all different ways. So yours was out there, well bid on and I didn't win. I just couldn't afford it. I did.
What did they go for?
I don't know, but it was more than I was, because my wife wanted a coffee maker, so that's what we bid. That and jewelry, she's put Kim Kenniston. So, and I just love how people say, "Hey, you won that." No, I didn't, I just paid it. I didn't win anything. No, the rest, no, this one's a home one. But no, I just wanted to say it was fun and it was very well-attended and it was nice to see all the parents.
As was the Ed Slattery fundraiser, there was a lot of Whitman parents there, that was Friday night, very busy with the Whitman Youth Basketball, the council. And I saw a lot of Whitman parents there that was going through a hard time and they really supported them. It was, it was packed. It was, yeah, very, very impressive. We loved.
Just a gentle reminder, the middle school community, conferences are coming up. Please take that opportunity to meet with your children's teachers and discuss any concerns or goals that you might have. They're a fabulous staff and they're always willing to help as are all of our teachers in our district with their kids' education. But the middle school time for conferences, I believe, is the second of February through Thanksgiving, I'm not quite sure on the dates, but it's coming up the first or second of February.
Okay. At your place tonight, you all had an envelope and that is an invitation to the 2012 Hall of Fame and Staff Recognition Banquet through the Greenfield Park and Rec. So if you would like to attend that, that would be great. It's always a nice evening, I will be there. And if you know for sure you don't want to attend, you can give me your replies back because we have a meeting Thursday night, so. Okay.
Motion, Lou, turn.
Thank you. VJ, second, Rick? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.